Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 22nd Legislative Session for the Salisbury City Council. Call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's participating. We have a big crowd on tonight. And at this time, I will ask if you will join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. At this time, we have a proclamation. Acting Mayor Glance will give the proclamation. Good evening, Mrs. Glance.
Good evening, everybody, and it's so nice to see so many faces with us tonight. And we're certainly excited to share this proclamation with you all. Before you is a proclamation for Success Temple 154 and Queen City Lodge 1051. So whereas Success Temple 154 is celebrating 100 years of service, March 22nd to 1921, March 22nd, 22, 1921, excuse me, to March 22nd, 2021, as an auxiliary to Queen City Lodge 1051 of the Improved Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks of the World Incorporated. And it's appropriate to recognize this milestone of the service in our community. And whereas Success Temple 154 Daughters and Queen City Lodge 1051 Brothers operate under the umbrella of Elks Grand Lodge and of the Improved Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks of the World Incorporated, a charitable nonprofit organization organized in 1898 with its auxiliary organized in June 1902. And whereas Success Temple 154 practices charity, justice, sisterly love and fidelity, their motto is to, is to do unto others as you would have done unto you. And whereas the auxiliary to the Grand Lodge was organized because man was met, was not meant to be alone. Auxiliary Daughters support Lodge Brothers in practicing charity as well as hosting or sponsoring programs which provide support to the community. And whereas Queen City Lodge 1051 reorganized in May 1940 with subsequent Memorial Day Weekend Anniversary celebrations, including a Sunday Parade, joined together with Success Temple 154 in 1946 to purchase a property where they both currently reside on 230 Catherine Street in Salisbury. And whereas Success Temple 154 and Queen City Lodge 1051 sponsor most events jointly, and those events have included not only voter registration and education, at times partnering with NAACP and the VFW told events at the Elks Home or VFW, but also maintaining all manner of voter registration applications onsite year round for initial registration or changes to current registration. And whereas Success Temple 154 and Queen City Lodge 1051 have also sponsored an open house for Real ID and census, which include providing information to drivers about verification of driver's identification to determine whether they are wearing compliance and partnering with the County Complete Count Committee to provide census information to the community, which then enabled community members to register for the census. And whereas Success Temple 154 and Queen City Lodge 1051 have for the past 43 years, with the exception of 2020 due to COVID-19 pandemic, served Christmas dinner and provided gifts and entertainment to area senior citizens on the first Friday in December at its annual senior citizens banquet. And whereas Success Temple 151 and Queen City Lodge 1051 have participated with the Salvation Army Red Kettle Campaign by ringing the bell, supported National Nights Out Bless Our Children campaigns, Black History programs, partnered with the NAACP to help partner, provide computers and equipment to Y Comico County students, provided financial support to Y Comico County churches, organizations and clubs, and held a community yard sale where all items were free and a bounce house was provided for children, and held a line dance at the Elks Home that was open to the public. And whereas 100th Anniversary Celebration Weekend of Events was recently held for Elks family and friends at the Success Temple 154 and Queens City Elks Lodge 1051 joint facility located on Catherine Street. Now therefore, I Julie Glenn, City Administrator for the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim today, March 22nd, as Success Temple 154 Day. Congratulations to everybody, and thank you so much for the immense participation in the community. Those are some really terrific efforts, and we're very grateful for all of you.
Yes, I will, I will second that. I'm sure the other council members agree. As a matter of fact, I see some applause up on top. So thank you very much for everything you do. 100-year anniversary is pretty significant, I would say. And although I probably won't be around for the second 100, we wish you luck over the next 100 years. So congratulations to all of you. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Blake and a second by Ms. Jackson to adopt the legislative agenda. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of the legislation agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda? Here, are you still on? I think we lost him. We'll skip and see if we can come back to him. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Mr. Boda? I guess he's having trouble connecting, so I will vote aye as well. The motion will be four to zero with one absent. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson made the motion. Ms. Blake seconded. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Council. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the February 22nd, 2021 Council Meeting Minutes and also closed session minutes from the same date, March 1st, 2021 Work Session Minutes and Resolution Number 3096 approving the appointment of Lay Wright out to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending March 2024. And that's it for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Bodas, is he on yet? No. Ms. Jackson?
Mr. Boda is here.
Oh, Mr. Boda, questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions and no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call the motion. All those in favor for approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda is adopted by a vote of five to zero. And I'd like to thank Lay for the, Lay Riddell for the appointment, and thank you for volunteering for the city. We really appreciate your service. I'll entertain a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda made the motion. Ms. Jackson seconded. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. One item this evening, it's the Award of Bid for Contract Number ITB 21-118. It's the Park Water Treatment Plant Window Restoration and Office Construction. The Department of Procurement did receive a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids from qualified and experienced contractors for the following procurement. So over at the Park Water Treatment Plant, this bid called for restoration of all or 13 historic windows, rerouting of the HVAC ductwork, and construction replacement of the front office at the water, at the Park Water Treatment Plant. There is a typo in the bid packet. The bid date, meaning the date that the bid went out on the street, was actually January 9th, not January 27th. Bid opening was February 9th, 2021, at 2:30. The second low bidder was colossal contractors from Burtonsville, Maryland, at a cost of $129,971.80. The city followed standard bidding practices by publicly posting the bid on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. The departmental recap in your, the departmental memo provides a recap of the pricing submitted by vendor and the reason for awarding to the second low bidder. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract to the vendor as noted.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor to approve the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3097.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson and was it Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Gregory made the second. Mayor, Acting Mayor Glance?
Evening, Council. Resolution Number 3097, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, appointing the law firm Cocky Brennan &amp; Maloney, PC, as city solicitor. Whereas Section SC 9-1 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury provides, in pertinent part, there shall be a Department of Law headed by the city solicitor. The city solicitor and any city, assistant city solicitors shall be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the majority of the full council. Whereas on March 5th, 2021, the administration received written notice from Sidell Baker &amp; Tillman informing the city of the law firm's resignation as city solicitor and legal counsel for the city effective April 2nd, 2021. Whereas after April 2nd, 2021, Sidell Baker &amp; Tillman will provide the city with legal services on an as-needed basis upon request from the administration to effectuate the orderly and efficient transition of the city's legal businesses, business and affairs to such legal counsel as an appointed hereunder. Whereas the administration, with the approval of the council, desires to appoint a new law firm to serve as the city solicitor and as legal counsel for the city pursuant to Article 9 of the City Charter. Whereas the administration contacted numerous law firms that maintained a principal office in Salisbury, and along with Council President Heath, conducted interviews of potential candidates for the city solicitor position. Whereas three firms were interviewed and ranked based off the following criteria: billing, including fees and timeliness of invoicing, performance, including firms' experience, legal team assembled, use of technology and communication, and three soft skills, alignment of the city's mission, independent initiative, goal orientation and interpersonal skills. And whereas the administration has confirmed the law firm of Cocky Brennan &amp; Maloney and its attorneys meet the qualifications for city solicitor provided in Section SC 9-2 of the City Charter, and Cocky Brennan &amp; Maloney will match the hourly rate of the city. The city is currently charged by Sidell Baker &amp; Tillman for legal services. And whereas the administration requests that the council approve the appointment of Cocky Brennan &amp; Maloney as a city solicitor and legal counsel for the city pursuant to Article 9 of the City Charter. And whereas in accordance with the foregoing, council hereby approves the appointment of Cocky Brennan &amp; Maloney, PC, to serve as city solicitor and legal counsel for the city pursuant to Article 9 of the City Charter, which said appointment shall be deemed effective immediately upon passage of this resolution.
You're muted, Jack.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Boda?
First, I would like to thank Mr. Tillman and his team for the years of service to our city. I believe they've been our city solicitor for, what, about 10 years? So grateful for their service. And sometimes it's time to move on, time to make a change and go in a new direction. And so we've, this is a very, very competent law firm with, with great talent that's coming on board with the city and looking forward to working with them over the next, you know, however long they're with us. So thank you, and I fully support this resolution.
Ms. Jackson?
Well, Mark, I'm gonna miss you. You were my next-door neighbor for four years, sitting at the round table, but as the resolution said, it's quite certain that, you know, times change and things go on and the actual law firm that is coming on is gonna be a good one as well. We appreciate everything that you've done for us, and it will never be forgotten. In the act of you resigning, take care of yourself. Do what needs to be done, and I'm gonna miss you. That's all I have to say. Gonna miss you. The city's gonna miss you.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
Nothing that already hasn't been said. Of course, we're gonna deeply miss Mark, and we'll just see what our future endeavors hold, and you know, that's it.
Thank you, Angel. Mrs. Gregory?
Just wanna co-sign what everybody else has already said. Thank you, Mark, and I look forward to working with this new team.
Thank you, Michelle. Mark, thank you for your service. It's appreciated. And we wish you the best going forward. All right, I'll call the question now. Mark, if you would, please read the ordinance.
It was a resolution. It was already read by-
Resolution, I'm sorry. I will now call the motion on the Resolution Number 3097. If you are in favor, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3097 is a pass, is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2656 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson and Mr. Boda second. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Salisbury Municipal Code by adding Chapter 5.53 in order to place a limit on third-party restaurant delivery fees and to protect the third-party driver's income during the current COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation and amendment. And whereas a state of emergency and catastrophic health emergency was proclaimed on March 5th, 2020 by the governor of the state of Maryland and renewed on March 17th, 2020, April 10th, 2020, May 6th, 2020, June 3rd, 2020, July 1st, 2020, August 10th, 2020, September 8th, 2020, October 6th, 2020, October 29th, 2020, November 25th, 2020, and December 23rd, 2020 to control and prevent the spread of COVID-19 within the state. And the state of emergency and catastrophic health emergency still exists. And whereas COVID-19 is an infectious and contagious respiratory disease that may spread easily from person to person and may result in serious illness or death, is a public health catastrophe, and whereas the U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention has advised that social distancing is necessary to contain the spread of COVID-19. And as a result of COVID-19, there is limited seating capacity at food service establishments, which have been required to enforce social distancing measures to contain the spread of this potentially deadly infectious disease at such establishments. And whereas the restaurant industry contributes to the vitality and personality of the City of Salisbury provides necessary meals to patrons and employees, local and regional residents. And whereas the social distancing measures required to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 virus mean that delivery, curbside pickup and takeout options from restaurants are critical to the public's access to prepared food to assist in responding to a potential shortage of food. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant negative impact on the local economy and has impacted small local restaurants, resulting in economic hardship for business owners and their employees due to loss of business income, layoffs and economic hardship for the staff due to reduced work hours and income. And whereas public health orders have resulted in limited indoor dining capacity at food service establishments, which has increased the utilization of takeout and delivery services in limited capacity has placed a necessary but sudden and severe financial strain on many food service establishments that already operate on thin margins, adding to financial pressures in the industry that predate the current public health crisis. And whereas while each service agreement between the food service establishment and a third-party delivery service or platform may vary, all such agreements routinely include a delivery commission fee that can include agreements with commission fees of up to 30% or more of the purchase price, which can also result in the increase of food prices paid by vulnerable citizens in need of delivery and pickup services from food service establishments due to COVID-19. And whereas food service establishments, particularly small family-owned restaurants or food trucks with few locations, have limited bargaining power to negotiate lower commission fees with third-party food and drink delivery services, including application based delivery platforms due to only a few companies in the marketplace providing such delivery services and face dire financial circumstances during this COVID-19 pandemic because takeout and delivery are the only options to keep such businesses in operation when shelter-in-place restrictions occur or may, or many customers are not permitted in said locations due to seating capacity limitations. And whereas on a temporary basis, capping the delivery fee and/or commission fee to a maximum 15% of the purchase price on delivery or pickup orders, while food service establishments are unable to provide unrestricted dine and, unrestricted dine and service, will accomplish a fundamental government purpose of easing the financial burden on struggling restaurants during this public health emergency while not unduly burdening third-party delivery services, including web application-based delivery platforms and commission-based food and drink delivery services to help temporarily secure the economy. And whereas it is in the public interest to take action to maximize food service establishment revenue affected by current delivery and pickup order fees, which affect a lifeline and predominates, source, predominant source of revenue for the City of Salisbury's food service establishments to enable these businesses to survive the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic and to continue contributing to the vitality of Salisbury's community during this temporary crisis and to ensure all citizens can access food on a reasonably priced basis. And whereas SC 5-121 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code grants the city the power to regulate any business or calling. And whereas nothing herein shall be construed to limit or conflict with any order or authority of the local health officer, secretary of the Maryland Department of Health or governor of the state of Maryland. And whereas during this time of local economic disruption and uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, many vulnerable workers have found work opportunities as delivery drivers for these third-party food delivery platforms to financially support themselves and their families and may be economically impacted if third-party food delivery platforms seek to reduce compensation rates to those delivery drivers as a result of the limitations placed on delivery fees and commission fees herein as it is necessary to take action to prevent such undercompensation, including but not limited to new restrictions on the amount of tips provided to delivery drivers as a result of restrictions on commissions as set forth in this ordinance. And whereas these prohibitions and restrictions are temporary and apply only where indoor dining is prohibited or limited to less than full seating capacity. And whereas third-party food delivery services or platforms may further undermine already vulnerable workers if the business owners reduce compensation rates to these drivers as a result of the ordinance which caps delivery fees and commission fees for online orders and orders, excuse me, orders and orders. And the restrictions to 15% commissions will not unduly burden third-party food delivery services or platforms. And whereas the City of Salisbury hereby desires to amend its municipal code to address the aforementioned concerns until food service establishments are authorized to operate at unrestricted full seating capacity, now therefore be enacted or ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapter 5.53 be added to Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Salisbury Municipal Code as follows. We'll read Chapter 5.53, Third-Party Food Service Establishment Delivery Fee Limits. 5.53.010 under definitions, we'll read for the purpose of this chapter, the following words shall have the meaning, meanings indicated. Delivery fee means, however characterized, a fee or commission charged by a third-party food delivery service or platform providing for food service establishment with a service that delivers or facilitates the ordering or delivery of food or beverages from food service establishments to customers, including but not limited to those picked up by customers in person. The term does not include any other fee that may be charged by a third-party food delivery service or platform to food service establishments, such as optional fees paid to obtain additional products or services or fees related to processing the online order. Food service establishment means a restaurant is defined in Section 5.52.010, including bars, nightclubs and other similar establishments to sell food or beverages for consumption on premises and social clubs with dining facilities collectively known as food service establishments that may serve food and beverages to customers for consumption in outdoor seating areas, sell food and beverages that are promptly taken from the premises, i.e. on a carryout or drive-through basis, deliver food and beverages to customers off, off the premises and serve food and beverages to customers for consumption in indoor seating areas. Convenience stores that utilize third-party food delivery services or platforms are also included within the above definition and are subject to the limitations set forth herein. Online order, or order, means an order placed by a customer through a platform provided by the third-party food delivery service or platform, including a telephone order, email, SMS or mobile order of any kind. Purchase price means the menu price of an online order is set on a food service establishment's menu, excluding taxes, gratuities or other fees that may make up the total cost to the customer of an online order. Third-party food delivery service or platform means a computer, telephone, SMS, website, mobile application or other internet service that facilitates the sale and same-day delivery or same-day pickup of ready-to-eat food or beverages provided by food service establishments in the state. 5.53.020, Limitation of Fees/Charges, Subsection A, reads that it shall be unlawful for a third-party food delivery service or platform to charge a food service establishment a delivery fee or a mandatory gratuity or donation fee for the use of a third-party food delivery service or platform that exceeds 15% of the purchase price of any food delivery order, including an online order. This chapter does not limit a delivery fee for alcohol unless purchased with food. Subsection B, it shall be unlawful for a third-party food delivery service or platform to reduce the gratuity or compensation rate paid to a delivery service driver or individual picking up food on foot for delivery or to garnish or reduce gratuities paid to a delivery service driver or other delivery individual to comply with this chapter, such that the compensation paid to the third-party food delivery service person by a food service establishment may not exceed 15% of the purchase price of an online order for food or food delivery order. Subsection C, a food service establishment may agree to pay a third-party food delivery platform a fee or charge that exceeds the limits set forth above to obtain optional services, optional products or services, including but not limited to advertising, marketing or access to customer subscription programs in addition to delivery or pickup service. All such agreements shall be in writing. Section 5.53.030, entitled Violations and Penalties, states that the provisions of this chapter shall be enforced by the, and the code at this point does not include which department or his or her designate a person who violates this chapter after written notice to take corrective action is guilty of a municipal infraction and shall be fined $250 for the first offense and shall be fined up to $500 for each subsequent offense. Each day a violation exists shall be a separate offense. 5.53.040, entitled Expiration, reads the restrictions and prohibitions contained with this, in this chapter shall automatically expire on the first day after the less-than-full occupancy seating restrictions tied to the current pandemic are lifted for food establishments. City of Salisbury shall post on its web- City of Salisbury shall post on its website confirmation of the expiration of the restrictions covered by this chapter. That is it for the substance of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments from the council members? Mr. Boda?
I know I missed last week as I was in a training class that was on Zoom. Did we, have we determined which department will be enforcing this?
I don't believe we have, but that's something that I would willingly take over if that's desired by council.
Well, I think the decision, the decision should be Acting Mayor Glenn's decision. So.
Well, before we have the second reading, we're going to have to have that department in, entered in on the ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
We will be sure to come prepared with that for the next meeting and I'll chat with Laura about that tomorrow and we'll nail it down.
Okay. Um. Yep, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comment. Mayor has conquered it.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. My only comment is, believe it or not, this is one of the most difficult votes that I'm going to do and my, my vote is based on my interviews and discussions with a cross-section of restaurants and also the recommendation of the Chamber of Commerce. So that's, that's, that's my comments. If there's no other comments, I will call the motion on to approve ordinance number two six five six, excuse me, for the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Nay.
Ms. Jackson?
Nay.
Ms. Blake? Ms. Blake?
I know, I know you're calling on me. Can I, can I pass for the moment?
No.
Okey-dokey then. No.
Well, you, you, you can pay, you, let me take it back. You can pass because there's one more, one more voter. But you want to stay with your vote? Or you want to reconsider?
I'll stay.
Okay. And this is Gregory?
Well, I'm going to be the odd man out. Yay.
Okay. And the chair votes nay. Ordinance number two six five six for the first reading is defeated by a vote of four to one. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number two six five seven for the first reading.
So move.
Ms. Jackson? Through a second?
Second. Michelle can have it.
I thought, I thought I heard you.
No, my, my computer is giving me a little bit of a delay, so I apologize to everyone. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance number two six five seven is ordered to the city to accept federal grant funding from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for Grant BJAG dash two thousand nineteen dash zero 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 one, National Incident-Based Reporting System, what known as NIBRS Training and amending the grant fund budget to appropriate these grant funds for the NIBRS Training. Whereas the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention has awarded the Salisbury Police Department fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting costs for training associated with a mandatory switchover to the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And whereas on a national level, NIBRS will be replacing the current national system known as the Uniform Crime Report. And whereas the NIBERS and UCR are processes utilized to collect and report crime data to the Federal Bureau of Investigation via the Maryland State Police Records Division. And whereas the conversation, the conversion to NIBRS is a national mandate. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city accepts the aforementioned grant funds to be spent as outlined in the underlying grant agreement, which is attached to this ordinance, be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, the city's grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the Burn Memorial JAG Revenue Account by fifteen thousand dollars and increase the SPD Training slash Schools Expense Account by fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I now call the motion. Will those in favor of ordinance number two six five seven, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six five seven for the first reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number two six five eight for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Ordinance number two six five eight is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury accepting grant funds from the Maryland State Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services in the amount of twenty-four thousand under the FY twenty-one Police Recruitment and Retention Program and amending the grant fund budget to appropriate these funds for payment of retention bonuses to eligible Salisbury police officers. Whereas the Maryland State Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Crime Victim Services has awarded the Salisbury Police Department twenty-four thousand dollars for the purpose of police retention. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department has identified fifty-one officers in three categories that will benefit from this award based on tenure. And whereas eleven officers with one to three years of service to the City of Salisbury will receive six hundred and ten dollars as a retention incentive. And whereas thirty officers with nine to nineteen years of service to the City of Salisbury will receive four hundred and forty-three dollars as a retention incentive. And whereas ten officers with twenty-plus years of service to the City of Salisbury will receive four hundred dollars as a retention incentive. And whereas in FY twenty, officers with three to five years of service to the City of Salisbury received one thousand dollars as a retention incentive. And officers with six to eight years of service received a retention incentive of eight hundred dollars. And whereas officers holding the rank of captain and above did not receive incentives in FY twenty and will not receive funds in FY twenty-one under this award. And whereas officers in the police academy, officers with less than one year of service and officers that decline the funds under the FY twenty grant award are not receiving funds under this award. And whereas officers will be required to sign a one-year contract of commitment to remain with the City of Salisbury Police Department for one year after receiving awarded funds. And whereas the exact amount of that, amount that each eligible officer receives in a particular tenure category could slightly increase if eligible officers decline the retention incentive award. And whereas it is, it is the desire of the Salisbury Police Department that the incentive, along with other incentives that Salisbury Police Department already has in place, will encourage officers to remain employed with the City of Salisbury. And whereas acceptance of the grant funds is subject to general and special conditions as outlined in the attached grant award. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city accepts the aforementioned grant funds to be spent as outlined in the underlying grant agreement connected here too, be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, that city's grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the G O C C P Revenue Account by twenty-four thousand dollars. Increase the SPD Salaries Bonus Expense Account by twenty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. My only comment is that anything we can do to help retain our officers is a positive thing. And this is a, this is a good one. So hopefully this will aid us in maintaining our, our strength of officers. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six five eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six five eight for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to attain a motion to approve ordinance number two six five nine for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Ordinance number two six five nine is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to abandon an area of land being the alley connecting Washington Street and Eastern Shore Drive. Whereas the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorized the transfer of ownership of a small residential lot that was deemed to be a non-buildable parcel of land via Resolution twenty-eight nineteen, which was signed on March thirteenth, twenty eighteen to Union Realty LLC. And whereas the properties which border the alley are owned by Union Realty LLC and Arapaho Realty LLC, both companies having the same managing member, Michael C. Dunn. And whereas the alley being closed is identified as parcel one, parcel two and parcel three as shown on the platte entitled Alley Closing Washington Street, Eastern Shore Drive, attached as Exhibit A. And whereas the owner of the land adjoining parcel one and parcel three, which will receive said parcels, is Union Realty LLC. And the owner of the land adjoining parcel two, which will receive said parcel, is Arapaho Realty LLC. And whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined that the aforementioned area of land is no longer needed for use by the public and the city believes it is in the best interest of the city to abandon the aforementioned area of land, indeed parcel one, parcel two and parcel three to the adjoining property owners as stated above. And whereas the alley was intended to be transferred as part of the previous land transfer and whereas the Salisbury Charter SC eleven dash two gives the City of Salisbury charge of all public ways in the City of Salisbury. And whereas the SC sixteen dash eight allows the City of Salisbury to abandon or otherwise dispose of property that is not saleable. And whereas the city solicitor has prepared the proposed quitclaim deeds to convey the alley, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B. And whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development provided the city council with a recommendation of the proposed alley abandonment. I guess that would be the last work session, which I cannot recall the date of. I apologize. I'll say it, the last work session, city council work session. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the City of Salisbury hereby abandons the one thousand eight hundred fifty-three square foot area compromising, comprising alley. The alley, parcel one, parcel two and parcel three. And that the mayor of the City of Salisbury has authorized to execute the attached deeds to convey the adjoining property to, to, to the adjoining property owners, the city's right title and interest in the, in the abandoned alley.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Mark, don't feel bad about not knowing the date from last Monday because I don't know even what today's date is, so. First, I just also wanted for clarification purposes that people understand that the Michael Dunn that owns this, this realty property company is not the Michael Dunn of the Greater Salisbury Committee and former Salisbury City Council President, Michael Dunn, or the great ND. So clear, just to clarify that, they're, they're two separate people. So just so everybody knows.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I have no questions as well. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two six five nine for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six five nine for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. That concludes the items on the agenda. I will now open it for public comments. Ms. Glance will go through and anybody that would like to comment, please raise your hand or in the chat.
Mr. President, I think Casey Martin is here to speak. And she's waving twice.
I'm like, I'm raising my hand.
Casey, I, I see you, Casey. Go ahead.
I, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you guys for having your meetings on Zoom. I really appreciate it as my children have their bath. I don't have to find a sitter to come in. So I'm here to talk about, oh goodness, it is chapter, it's a permit that I found on the books that I think just maybe a little out of date. It is five point two eight point, oh, just five point two eight. It's a fortune-telling permit. I'm trying to start a business, reading tarot cards, and I found this thousand-dollar permit, which just seemed a little, a little much for tarot cards. So just wanted to point it out to you guys.
Right. Ms. Glance, you, you got that message?
I did get that message and I saw Ms. Martin was out at the county council meeting as well last week with the same sentiments. Apparently they have a similar fee, so Casey would be hit twice if I'm understanding that correctly. So does seem like a little much.
Have similar qualifications, like you have to, the counties is a thirteen-step process for the permit and a moral character interview with the sheriff. The city's is an eight-step process and a moral, moral character interview with the police chief. So read through it, get your own, own perspective on it. I just wanted to bring it to your, you know, bring it into your eyes and see what you thought.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
I actually emailed you earlier about it, so I, I think you got, did you get that? Because Casey had come to me and I, I've got the link, I sent you the link to the particular piece of code.
When did you, when did you send it?
Just before the meeting. It wasn't long before the meeting. So yeah, I'm sure you haven't seen it yet, so.
I'll drop it into the chat too, just so you guys have the, the Muni code.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a large fee. It's a large fee. I.
It's definitely a hundred percent. They pay for processing too, but yeah. You could look at it, that would be lovely.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't see any.
Take a look at it.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other requests for comments?
We have a couple others. Ms. Caprice Fichette?
Okay.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to first defer to Julie McCabe. We are here for the same reason. So if Julie can speak first, I greatly appreciate it. I may jump in a little bit later.
Laura, thank you, Caprice. Good evening. Thank you, council chairman and other council members. My name is Julie McCabe. I'm the Vice President of Service Enhanced Housing with Homes for America. Homes for America is a nonprofit affordable housing developer and owner located in Annapolis. Homes for America is a nonprofit affordable housing developer and owner located in Annapolis, Maryland. We are the current owners of Gateway Village Apartments located at nine thirty-nine Gateway Street. In the course of the past year, we have experienced a heightened and increased and aggressive nature of different criminal activities on our, in our community and against our residents, specifically related to assaults, apartment break-ins, vehicular break-ins, trespassing, you know, soliciting of our residents and seniors and vulnerable residents in our community. And most recently, well, and also sleeping in our stairwells. And most recently, in the past, I believe, week, we've had two shootings that have entered our residents' bedroom windows and broken two windows through, coming from high powered twenty-two caliber pellet guns. And we're extremely fortunate that it didn't hit any of our residents. And we've been in collaboration in the past year with Delegate Sample Hughes, Councilwoman Jackson, Chief Duncan, in trying to institute a number of different avenues to eradicate this criminal behavior, the trespassing that's mainly due to people trespassing into the community as well as a homeless encampment that sits adjacent to Gateway Village Community. And those homeless persons are living at the, I guess, the private residence of Salisbury Scrap Metal, I guess owned by Joseph Smith and Sons, under the legal entity name of Okomoco Land LLC. And so we're here this evening to request, I guess, a greater collaboration between the county and the city services to help immediately eradicate this homeless encampment, help us with the trespassing of persons onto our property. We have, you know, spent several thousands of dollars in the past year trying to, to support our residents and create a safe and secure community. We've, we've most recently hired a third party security firm. We've installed natural fencing at the, at the recommendation of Chief Duncan. We've increased our lighting and we're about ready to undergo a huge multimillion dollar redevelopment of the community. And we're just trying to ensure the safety and security of our residents in our community. And so we're really requesting an immediate action and collaboration to eradicate the trespassing, the homeless encampment, and to support those individuals within the city but elsewhere so that they are not entering our community.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Mayor, Acting Mayor Glance, you want to comment first?
Sure. Thank you, Julie. And Caprice, if you need to add anything, we'll, we'll be sure to let you do that. April, Councilwoman Jackson gave me a call this morning about this incident. And Chief and I have spoken and, and I know that she has been working diligently with, with these folks here to, to try to work on resolving this, this issue. So I think, Chief, if you want to jump in and, and help on, on where we are and your next steps, you know, just from, from, from my, from my view, you know, nobody should, should live in, in that type of environment where they're, where they're fearful and not, not, not having a, a safe place to, to lay their head. So I am sorry that this is all happening to your community and we're going to do everything that we can to, to help resolve this issue.
Thank you.
Eve?
So, thank you, Acting Mayor and Council President, and good evening, everyone. Ms. McCabe is correct. You know, we have made a number of recommendations over the years for this particular piece of property. And I believe some of those recommendations are being employed now. We've spent a lot of time. This is a, a vulnerable residential area just due to the nature of the types of individuals that Gateway Village serves. And so our officers are well informed and they conduct numerous patrol checks when we are available to respond out, to work with management, to actually trespass individuals. Management, of course, has to be present for us to trespass individuals. That's very helpful for us. The natural barriers that, I haven't seen them, so I'm assuming they went in recently. And so Ms. McCabe, thank you for installing them. It's my understanding that some of those have in fact been damaged. And really, the, the big ticket item is going to help us and, and help you as well is, is the installation of the cameras. That you've, you've done a really good job hardening as much of your public space that you possibly can. I don't know if you had reconsidered installing the screen doors, you know, for your residents and where that is yet. But I know that you were looking into that as well. As far as the recent incident of the malicious destruction of property, specifically the windows. Unfortunately, that event, we'd have to be able to prove intent in what we found, even though it was on just outside the city limits, we still went over and engaged these folks. And what we found was they had set up some cans and they were shooting at the cans and didn't realize that, I guess their, their projectiles were going to reach the residential complex. So we weren't able to make a, a criminal arrest at that time. As you know, you know, if they were inside the county, inside the city limits, we do have an ordinance that addresses this specifically. Air guns and slingshots and whatnot. But unfortunately, we weren't able, we weren't, we didn't have the jurisdiction to, to issue a citation for that either. Now, I know that we have collaborated with Christine Chestnut about this homeless camp. And I don't want to speak for Christine, but I know that she has put a lot of work into supporting those folks at this homeless camp, even though they're outside the city. And I have no issue or concern whatsoever in collaborating with the county in an attempt to, to find different accommodations for the folks at this camp. It's my understanding that now more than ever, this particular property is, the camp's been there for a long time. And so as you can imagine, there is a lot of refuse that's been built up back there. And this is just personal observation of, of, you know, late with my officers that have gone back there. And it, something larger needs to happen of this particular problem of the homeless camp itself. So.
Chief, I, I spoke to County Executive of John Posoto Thursday. And I got a response from AK Kenny today. And the Sheriff Department did go back out there to look at the site and it was a terrible mess, they said. But what I want to do, what I want to see done is the city and the county work together to get this taken care of. I, because we have seniors who are in danger. And instead of it getting better, it's getting worse. And I just want to see us be able to collaborate to make this work for the betterment of the city and the county. And I know that they have found out who owns, would used to be Salisbury Steel. They do know who it is. So they're, they're reaching out to them to ask about putting those signs up. Now, the only thing is reinforcing those signs when someone is caught on the property. But what I'd like to see is Mayor Glance and Mr. Posoto and the city council and the county council work together to get this done. Because I do know for a fact that Gateway Village has been reaching out to us for a long time. And I know the chief has been very pertinent. She's been there. I've not seen one time that either she hasn't been there or somebody else from the department hasn't. So we need to get this taken care of because I do not want to see a senior or anyone lose their life over stupidity and neglect. So let's work on this, please. Let's work on this.
Thank you, April.
You're welcome.
I'd like to ask a question to Julie. Because I deliver Meals on Wheels out there and I know twenty of the residents personally now. And I've known her for a few months. And the question I had is Julie, has, has the security started already? Or because I didn't see any security and I, and I was to every, pretty much every unit. And certainly in eight thirty-nine, I was, I was in there for four different, on all floors.
So first, thank you for your volunteerism on the Meals on Wheels program. Yes, we have hired a third party security firm. They just recently started, I'd say, within the past month. They're on a rotating schedule and they're on a forty hour work week basis. So they have a rotating schedule, I believe. Caprice, if you can confirm, I believe they're just less than twenty hours a week onsite because that is currently what the property can afford through our operations.
Yes, that is true. They are rotating during, during the days of the week, mostly in the evening hours through to the morning at this time. Until we see if there's additional need during the day. But right now they're rotating in the evening.
Good. I hope that helps because they are the sweetest people, I will, I will tell you. The hardest thing to do is get away from them because they want, they want, they want to talk to you all the time. And, and it's, it's hard, but they, they are, I'm glad we're doing something. And we can do, if we can do more than we, we should do that. So we hear you.
Well, thank you. So. We certainly appreciate it. I mean, we've been trying to give it our best efforts and what, you know, the capacity of what the property can do as owners, what we can do, our collaboration, both publicly, privately. And, you know, with this most recent incident, heaven forbid a senior were to get shot and killed in our community. And because of jurisdictional issues between the city and the county, nothing can be done. That's where I'm finding that there's a gap in this. I mean, we've had great support from the police department and city council, you know, through absolutely no fault of anybody else, but there's some sort of gap that's missing between the jurisdictions where we can have two bedroom windows broken out, entering our residents' bedrooms. And not, nothing can be done. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleading with the council, the county to help, help us in any other means and support that you can give us.
We'll, we'll reach out to them.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Can I request Julie and Caprice, can you leave your contact information in the chat so we can follow up if we have any additional questions?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming on and making us aware of it. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Any other, any other requests for comments? Okay, then we'll go to the Acting Mayor and, and then the council members. Ms. Glance?
Thank you. I didn't get a chance to, to thank Mark and Pete and Christine earlier. So I wanted to just extend my gratitude for your service since two thousand twelve and appreciate all your support here and over the next couple of weeks. And also just want to share that we're getting a number of our employees vaccinated through title health and the health department. So really grateful for those opportunities to help take care of our team. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
He fell off again.
He fell off again.
Yeah.
Got to get, got to get that fixed. Ms. Jackson?
Um, I would indeed like to thank Homes of America and Habitat of America for coming on. We need to work together. So this is a good start for us from right here. I appreciate everything you've done in our community and you have been doing a great job. And I'd also like to congratulate the Queen City Elks Lodge and Success Temple, number one fifty-four, and Proven Evolence and Protective Order of Elks of the War Incorporated, and all their endeavors that will come upon them. I like to thank them because a hundred years, that's a lot of years. I'm like you, Jack. We'll never see another hundred. So I mean, working that hard, people in the community working the way they've been working. I'm grateful, thankful, and appreciative. So Queen City Elks Lodge, continue to do your work. Thank you.
Thank you, April.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blake?
You, you know what I'm going to say?
I know.
Blood.
You know it? Please, if you are healthy enough, please donate blood. Please do that. Reach out to the Delmarva Blood Bank. We're always in need and it's shortage in the area. And your pint of blood helps many, many people. So please consider donating blood.
Thank you, Angela. This is Gregory.
Please, if you can get vaccinated, if you qualify, but they'll be opening it up. Everybody will be able to very soon. Please sign up. I was actually able to get my first dose this past week. So I'm, I'm looking forward to getting that second dose and, and being done with it. You know, please, please go get, please go get your vaccine if you're able to. And I want to thank Casey for coming on as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
Could I say something, Jack? Just one thing?
Certainly, April.
Keith, thank you for always being there for our community. Just thank you. I'm grateful for your works, very much so. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Mirror's back on. I see him. Remarks for the good of the order.
I'm here. Everything, I'm not glitchy now. So I want to ask everybody if they recognize my background tonight.
Part Lane, that's the old mall?
I was going to say, is that the old mall?
It's the old mall. Part Lane?
Where's Julia?
Yes, I was going to say Part Lane. I haven't seen Part Lane since, mm, I'll tell my age.
We know your age.
So a little retro Salisbury feel this week. So
Nice.
Just want to thank everybody for being patient with me. I had some training last week at work and I, I clocked about forty-five fiscal hours of Zoom meetings last week. So that was fun. I just want to keep everybody, keep supporting our local businesses, keep tipping your waitresses and our drivers and supporting them. And just look forward to seeing everybody soon. And the weather's getting nice. So I hope everybody can get outside and enjoy the nice weather.
Yes.
Thank you, Mere. Couple of comments. One, wear your masks, give blood. And the last thing I have to say is, in my visiting a lot of the restaurants, they are, they are extremely frustrated because now they have waiting lines. And they, even though they're opened up for maximum, they can't because the restrictions on distance keep it from, keep them from filling. And I think that the recovery, as soon as we can get to that point where we can open it up completely, you're going to see the economy pick up really, really fast because everybody's got cabin fever anyway. So I, I wish you all a good, a good week. God bless everybody and we'll see you next Monday at our work session. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.